We do have time for a public comment session. We usually have that for about 15 minutes beforehand. I would point out generally for any topics you want to bring up on it. If there's specifics for Mohawk, which is on the agenda, bear in mind that there will be official public hearings on the applications before us in 2015. So if you don't get an opportunity to speak now, you could always, I would encourage, to attend those planning board meetings and to submit written comments or oral comments on it. I'd ask you with this one, that initially, if you have a lot of questions, try to keep the comments brief, knowing full well that not all the documentation is in here and there are questions that you probably want to raise that we probably don't have answers for now anyway. But I won't preclude you from making any comments at these sessions on it. So with that, we did not have an official sign-up sheet for it. We generally don't have one for comment sessions. We do for hearings. But I would ask, just basically raise your hand and we'll point you up. Two of the things I'd ask you to do is state your name and address so we're sure we get it correctly and down on the record. And probably in order for the people watching on TV, we'd probably ask you to stand up near Kelly so you can address the audience and us and still be captured. Nobody wants to see the back of your head giving a speech, okay? So, does anybody wish to speak at the public comment session?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
I'm not sure of the procedure you're describing here. So, what are we speaking on and what's going to happen next?
We open up the meeting with a public comment session. That people are allowed to bring up any issues that are not really addressing a public hearing session. It's kind of an open forum. And so we're going into that session now. I know most of you are here because Mohawk Preserve is on the agenda.
Right.
So you have an opportunity to speak in a comment session, but this is not an official public hearing yet.
So there'll be no opportunity? They're going to have an opportunity to present their plan or what's going to happen?
Once we can finish the public comment session, Mohawk will present what their application is, what it is that they're showing us for the official first time with the change in ownership on that.
There's nothing following that, though? There's no comments after the presentation?
No, no, there wouldn't be anything.
If we were here to comment on that, then we don't even know what it is yet.
Well, there's two ways of going about it. If the people are comfortable with it, we can let the applicant make his application, presentation to us. It's not a dialogue. Bear in mind, the applicant's going to make a presentation to the planning board of what they intend to do. We'll ask some questions and we'll leave it at that and then we'll open it up and give you an opportunity to ask. Paul?
Michael, am I correct, though, that some of us have been in to read Kelly's files in the planning board? And we're up to date and we feel we understand what the application is? This would be an appropriate time for us to comment?
Yes.
Yes.
This would be a better time.
That's all I need, Michael, just that answer, yes.
Yes.
That makes a difference, thank you, Michael.
Am I okay with?
Yeah. Are we? Are we, which part?
Well, that's what I mean.
From my standpoint, I don't think that the applicant will be answering any questions.
Oh, no.
Attending a dialogue back and forth with the public.
No, we're not.
It's going to be a public hearing. We'll respond after.
No, no, this is not, this is not an opportunity for you to present what you're asking for to the town. The subdivision that you've presented, OSI is presenting, to subdivide the land. And the second part of it is, the flip side again, is how does this subdivision, the change in increasing land, affect what Preserve has presented to us before as their site plan? It doesn't have to be down into the weeds at this stage of the game, but to give a general overall impression of what it means from one to the other. So first.
You want us to do that after the public comment?
Well, they'd like to go ahead and hear what it is.
I don't want to change the procedure that you guys employ at every single meeting and I don't agree to do it.
We're free to do whichever we want. And I think for this one, I think when we did it the first time when the Preserve presented their site plan was to have a site plan presentation on it. So it can be as short as five minutes and tell us what you're doing on the subdivision. And it can be as short as five minutes on what it means from the Preserve's site plan. That's all. Easy enough?
You want to do that, you don't? Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Come on up, Matt.
We're about to public comment session.
Guys, wait a minute, hold, hold, timeout.
Tell us we're here for public comment. Some of us made a plan to come here for public comment. We didn't come here to hear a presentation. I asked you to keep with the policies for the past 10 years and give us our chance to make a public comment.
I had.
And with consistent principle.
I had the.
What's going on here?
Timeout, Paul.
No, I'm asking you to give a public comment.
Fine. Who wants to make a public comment prior to Mohawk and OSI making a site plan?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, it's municipal town law. You can't prevent an applicant from submitting an application in any shape or form before the planning board, and the entire planning board should know that. So this gentleman may be at a wrong meeting, far as I'm concerned.
Fine, right. Timeout, timeout, wait.
Let him go.
Time.
Oh, shit.
All right.
I have a comment.
Fine.
I don't understand.
Name and address.
I'm Paul Brown, I live in New Falls. I don't understand how a for, a not-for-profit organization like OSI can come before a planning board to ask for basically a for-profit development plan. They want to take 19.1 acres and sell it off to somebody to make a profit. Are they a not-for-profit or are they a for-profit? So that's my comment. And I ask this planning board to think carefully about what they are enabling and the slippery slope they are getting on when they approve a development plan, basically a real estate development plan for an 875-acre parcel. You need a full environmental impact statement and you need to not approve any cockamamie idea about something called lawful segmentation, which is in the imagination of Attorney Moriello. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make a public comment?
Do you want me up here? I'm Larry Baden-Dyke, Sun Calvin Boulevard. I'm with the Shuangumans, citizens. And I'm going to read two statements from them. And this is about the PB 24 female four of Mohawk Preserve.
Can you hear me?
Do you want more volume? Okay, my voice is going. Dear Planning Board, My name is Abigail Altman. I am nine years old. I don't think you should make the grass a parking lot. I visit my grandparents in New Falls and me and my sister like to play outside on the grass. The parking lot will cover the grass and we won't be able to play there. All the little creatures won't be able to sleep there for the cold winter. Please protect the land for everyone. Abby Altman. You should all have a nine-year-old like that covering your back. Anyway, that's from citizens. This is the official statement and I'll give copies to the board. Dear Chairman Calamano and members of the planning board, The application referenced above before the Town of New Falls Planning Board is the second time the planning board has been asked to approve a subdivision of this 857-acre parcel that the OSI purchased from the Smiley Brothers Incorporated in 2011. The first time the planning board reviewed the original version of this application in June 2014, it determined that the application failed to provide the board with a full plan for the property, thereby segmenting the review process. The board instructed Mohawk Preserve to revise their plan and to resubmit a comprehensive plan covering all the phases of the development they are planning. Based on the materials submitted in this resubmission regarding the same application, the citizens of the Shuangums, a not-for-profit corporation incorporated in the state of New York, has a number of concerns. Among them are: One, the revised plan before the planning board is ineffective. The Mohawk Preserve's response to the board's instructions, but it fails to address the issues the board raised after the June 9th planning board meeting. It does not address the segmentation issue raised previously and by limiting the information provided to the planning board to the subdivision of the 857 acres parcel into three parcels, 9.1 acres, 0.6 acres, and approximately 837 acres, they are once again segmenting their plan by failure to disclose at a minimum what Mohawk Preserve intends to do with the 837 acres they will purchase from OSI. Two, in the full environmental assessment forms submitted by OSI in this November 2014 submission, OSI declares that this subdivision is a type 1 action and that there are likely adverse environmental impacts on wetlands, rare species, archaeological artifacts, and the fact that this is part of a state historic preservation designated site. The planning board should require a full environmental impact statement of this subdivision application of any and all site plans for the development of the 857-acre parcel, including the proposed private development of the 19.1-acre parcel. Three, at the planning board meeting in July 2011, the Smiley Brothers Incorporated requested their property be subdivided to rip the sale of 857 acres to OSI and they promised the town that no development would take place on this parcel. The town and its residents had every reason to believe that OSI and later Mohawk Preserve were making an implied covenant to reserve this property as open space. This proposed subdivision would break that covenant as it proposes to take lands considered open space and create a 0.6-acre parcel to be given to a private landowner and a 19.1-acre parcel to be sold to a private party for development as a residential property. Is the Town of New Falls Planning Board prepared to establish a precedent of enabling land conservancy organizations to remove property from open space designations for private development? We trust they would not. Four, Town of New Falls officials as well as Mohawk Preserve officials have stated that the existence of open space increases the value of residents' property values. People have purchased property near Preserve lands trusting that this open space would remain open space in perpetuity. Therefore, by removing currently open spaces and converting these parcels to private property, neighboring properties would be adversely affected because their property values would be lowered. Five, OSA and Mohawk Preserve benefit from their status as not-for-profit corporations. They enjoy the benefits of not having to pay income taxes. Their tax status provides, their donors receive tax credits as an offset against their income taxes for their contributions and they seek and receive exemptions from paying local property taxes. In exchange for these benefits, the law requires that no individual or corporation benefit from transactions with a not-for-profit. The New York State Not-for-Profit Revitalization Act of 2014 has strengthened the prohibitions on related party transactions, requiring greater transparency and accountability in such transactions. The transactions implied by the proposed subdivisions raise questions about who benefits from transactions described. Does the New Falls Planning Board know whether the subdivision of the Open Space Institute parcel is consistent with the requirements of the New York State Not-for-Profit laws? Six, this is the last point. There are many questions raised by this application, including whether the current actions and development plans that OSI and Mohawk Preserve have put before the planning board are consistent with their respective missions of preserving open spaces. We do not think so. In summary, we are concerned that this application asks the planning board to A, remove open space from outside of public use for private development; B, permit development on open space owned by a not-for-profit; C, when the seller of the property promised the planning board only three years ago that there would be no development; and C, attempt to obtain approval of the New Falls Planning Board without doing a full environmental impact statement. Respectfully submitted, Stan Altman, President, Citizens of the Shuangums Incorporated, Life Member of Mohawk Preserve. Who gets this?
Kelly. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to make a public comment?
Thank you. I'm Charles Rose. I live at 11 Woodlight Road in New Falls. I was at the meetings this gentleman just mentioned when OSI was looking to acquire this property three or so years ago. Those promises were clearly made, they're a matter of record. They wanted land that would never be touched, no development of any kind, wouldn't build one house, one item wouldn't be changed on that property. That was very clear to everybody. It was for preservation and conservation. I happen to be an adjoining property owner of Mohawk Preserve. I was a member of Mohawk Preserve. I will not be any longer. I'm a neighbor. No one's come to me to talk about this and it greatly affects the value of my property. I'm upset by it and the fact that they wouldn't even knock on my door and let me know what we're doing here tonight, I think speaks volumes about what's going on. Excuse me, I have to report. I see Mr. Moriello here. I've been, this year in this town, we've been deceived by large organizations coming into our town and taking control of it or trying to. And this planning board has done a good job in trying to protect us and I really appreciate that. I hope you're going to do the same here because it's a very similar situation in my life. I know you have a limited amount of time. You said 15 minutes at the beginning. I'll speak for myself and another neighbor, Mr. David Rockwell. He lives at 7 Woodlight Road. I'll read his comment first. He said, "I, David Rockwell, owner and resident of 7 Woodlight Road in Falls, New York, which adjoins this proposed subdivision, am advising the planning board and my opposition to any subdivision of the original 857-acre parcel currently owned by OSI. I agree with the original conservation of this property years ago as I believe it was preserved forever, as I believe. My support at that time was only because this guarantee of preservation and I see any attempt to reverse this as damaging to my property value in many ways and will strongly oppose it. If this were to occur, I would pursue action to have any tax exempt status for the entire parcel revoked." This is my comment from myself and my wife and my three children. My name is Charles Rose. For over 30 years, my wife and I and three children have owned and lived at 11 Woodlight Road. Our family has owned land in New Falls for 70 years. I'm very familiar with New Falls. Been quietly living here, supporting and paying rent taxes. We built our house ourselves. We paid a premium price because we were told that the land directly behind our home and only 70 feet from the back of our house was protected from any residential or commercial development in perpetuity. For many years, our home and the homes of our neighbors have been assessed by the Town of New Falls at a higher value than other homes of similar size and cost in other neighborhoods because the town assessors over the years recognize the value of having this type of land protection. We and our neighbors have willingly paid our taxes and are bearing our fair share of the taxation as determined by law in our community. Were this planning board to approve and validate this unprecedented action by Open Space Institute and the Mohawk Preserve, it will make a mockery of both terms, open space and preserve. We and our neighbors are painfully aware that the approval of this request will also lower our property values and represent a taking of our assets. Please don't open the door to this nefarious act. Now, we in the town are being told by the Open Space Institute and Mohawk Preserve that even though their mission claims, their mission claims they are land conservancies, they want to act like every other for-profit real estate developer and carve out a most valued 19.1-acre parcel for sale as a residence to a private property. And the question is, why all of a sudden is that necessary? And why all of a sudden do they want to do the whole deal? Where did that money come from, the sale of that property? I have a feeling that's the case. This cannot be right. It's not fair. They have held these lands and received the benefits of a nonprofit organization for many years now and now they're asking each of you as members of the planning board to enable them to sell off a prime parcel at a profit. How can OSI and Mohawk Preserve be allowed to maintain their tax exempt status and still be in the business of land development? I hope this board will require a full environmental impact statement from the applicant to get to the bottom of this proposed deal. This subdivision of 19.1 acres from the larger 857-acre tract has never been mentioned before. It certainly has nothing to do with the previous Gateway Foothills application. This is not an addendum. This is a totally new plan. We have told the Mohawk Preserve, we were told the Mohawk Preserve had withdrawn its previous plan. This subdivision of 19.6 acres is a new application and be treated as such. I ask that the board sever the proposed application, create a new planning board file and require the appropriate public notices and public hearings associated with a brand-new subdivision application. This is clearly not what we were ever here before to consider. I also ask that the board have the consideration, and this bears understanding by everyone here. Mr. Moriello has made specious arguments which attempt to persuade you that this is not the disfavored segmentation that was as defined under SEAKER, but rather something he would have you and the citizens of New Falls believe in some kind of lawful segmentation. This is the same Michael Moriello that I witnessed in these other meetings whose arguments in defense of tax abatements for the Wilmerite Corporation, real property deals have already been rejected by the planning board. I find it interesting the same players keep ending up here. That's a very unfortunate thing for this town. They must have some feeling they can override the great work of this board. I don't think they will. I respectfully request that the Open Space Institute be required to divulge all their plans. The entire 857-acre parcel, including any and all plans for the Gateway Foothills project, to the planning board members and the citizens of New Falls and Elster County Planning Board will know exactly why they are being asked to, what they are being asked to enable. Without a total non-segmentary review of this 857 parcel, any decision by the Town Planning Board and Elster County Planning Board will be not fully informed and it's likely to set dangerous precedents for future land use applications from the applicant and other supposedly not-for-profit organizations that come before the planning board in the future. Thank you for your consideration of these points I've raised and especially your service to the community.
Well, I just have to throw away all my notes because I've heard so much misunderstanding about what land trusts and nonprofits are enabled to do. As the founder of the Lockup Valley Land Trust, I want to assure all of you that one of the basic tools in the land trust toolkit, if you go to the Land Trust Alliance website, you will see that one of the ways land trusts keep the ability to purchase new land is by working with the landowner to carve out parcels for future development. So please don't leave this room thinking that the Mohawk Preserve has invented something that is in violation of the New York State Revitalization Nonprofit Act. This is actually, just go to the Land Trust Alliance website and you will see that this is how land trusts fund future acquisitions. They work with the landowner. The landowner says, "This part is never to be developed, but I want my kids to have a building lot here." And that's the basis for the future conservation easement. I recently received two emails from a group called Citizens of the Shuangums in writing me to tonight's meeting. The email did not list any of the officers or members of the group, but I'm here to accept their invitation. I would like to request that the group identify themselves and their officers in future emails to try to decide who to be, getting an anonymous email. You know who I am, but I don't know who you are. But apparently tonight I've heard that Stan Altman and his nine-year-old granddaughter are members of this group. So that's good to know. The email expressed concern that the Mohawk Preserve and OSI are either going to keep the hillside lot as open space or protect it with a conservation easement allowing a single-family dwelling. My reading of the Mohawk Preserve land management asset plan did note that that might be a standalone lot for future development. So I will wait for the planning board to review whether or not this is in fact a new development, but it looks to me as if it was there all the time. But that's why we have a planning board. Let's just keep a little perspective here. The view of the ridge is free, but maintaining that ecosystem is not. 25 years ago, when the Mohawk Mountain House was in dire financial straits, Smiley Weathers Inc. sold the parcel to Julianne Sudley and today, or at least I'd say it doesn't harm on Jacob's Lane. Using that zoning model, Smiley Weathers Inc. put and sold their 857-acre parcel to Toll Brothers, Wilmerite, Marriott. And instead of being asked to review the possibility of one home on 19 acres, our planning board could be reviewing a site plan for hundreds of homes, condos, townhouses, golf courses, parking lots, roads, maybe a casino. How about a raceway speed trap? The people of Acorns didn't think that could happen in their backyards, but it did. The reality is that the Mohawk Preserve lives up to its mission of providing education about and access to our incredibly rare and precious ecosystem every day. And if people can't afford a membership, you can volunteer and then you get to learn about all of their programs for free. For people who are offended that it costs money to help sustain this 857-acre jewel in our town, there will soon be a water park located next to the freeway where you can probably spend in a day what it would cost you in a year to be a member of the Mohawk Preserve. I suspect that this new attraction will greatly reduce traffic to the Preserve and hope that the impact of that reduced traffic will be part of your consideration of the foothills project as you go along. Meanwhile, somebody have something to say? Do I hear a comment? Nothing.
I think it was confusing. What's going to reduce traffic?
The, while very large.
It's going to reduce.
I think people will just stop right there and I think you will see greatly reduced traffic out to the foothills and across the bridge. Something to consider. Meanwhile, visitors will continue to enjoy the view of the ridge for free from just about everywhere in the Lockup Valley and either watch Lockup Valley or Mohawk Preserve for providing options. I can't do this here because I crossed it all out and.
Good evening, excuse me. I shared two things with Mr. Rose. First of all.
Name and address.
Yes, sorry, sorry. I'm Erwin Spurber. I'm with the citizens of the Shuangums. I teach at the sociology department at SUNY New Falls. I'm in the Sierra Club on the executive committee and I've lived in New Falls for about 30 years and in Gardner for 10 years and faithfully paid all the taxes, no tax exemptions for. for property taxes, school taxes, and so forth. This evening I'm speaking on my own, but I want to make it clear that Citizens of the Shongguns, in spite of Kitty Brown's reference to some creepiness over her... She believes that it's been kind of creepy that Citizens of the Shongguns has not identified its membership and the figures who are involved in it. Well, anyone who's been reading the local papers in the last couple of years is well aware of the fact that we are a group of a growing number of people. Some of them are lifetime members of the Preserve. Some are living immediately adjacent to the Preserve and are deeply concerned about the present and future pattern of what appears to be grandiose land development. Kitty Brown herself referred to the term "development", and that's exactly the concern that many of us have about this particular venture OSI is now putting on the table before the planning board. My understanding of land trusts is that they're a particular kind of environmental NGO or nongovernmental organization, and they're not supposed to be in the business of land development. They're supposed to be preventing land development. And particularly egregious in regard to the OSI and the Mohawk Preserve's recent conduct before the planning board is that all sorts of specious and far-fetched arguments were being presented as to why the Preserve and OSI should be spared the responsibility of submitting to a full environmental impact statement and why OSI and the Preserve should be allowed to go forward with segmentation when in fact any environmental organization worthy of the name would be embracing an opportunity to have a full review of any plans for development, any plans whatsoever, or changing any aspect of the environment. I say that emphatically because the town's own environmental... God forgive me, I'm just over the flu myself, and that's another thing I share with Mr. Rose along with his great...
Environmental Review Committee.
The Environmental Review Committee. Is that the literal term? Anyway, the Environmental Review Committee pointed out a long list, a laundry list, of all of the ways in which the Preserve's proposal for the historical gateway was going to have adverse environmental impact, adverse ecological consequences for this region. Now, we cannot any longer allow the tail to wag the dog. By that I mean that this whole process by which an environmental organization such as the Preserve can simply take for granted its self-declared right to impose any operations it wants upon the community, to continue to insist on tax exemptions for property taxes, when in fact what it's really up to is land development, and it's operating more and more, as is OSI, as a private landlord seeking private property, private profit. Now, if that is what they are up to, they are entitled to do that, but then that means their tax exemptions should be shut down once and for all. There are all too many people here in the foothills, particularly in New Falls, who cannot afford to pay their taxes, who are being driven away from their homes. I have to give you just a brief anecdote. I was teaching a class for senior citizens in Saginaw, and there were two individuals there who told me they were forced to sell their homes in New Falls because they could not afford to pay their property taxes. And that's because these tax exemptions have gotten so extensive. All too much land, including the land under the jurisdiction of OSI and Mohawk Preserve, is off the tax rolls, and so everybody else has to pick up the slack and subsidize it. It's a form of twisted and mutilated creeping socialism for the wealthy, and it must be stopped. Last but not least, any organization that has tried to evade or avoid full environmental impact review and has tried to avoid a close analysis of plans for segmentation really should be examined not only with ordinary scrutiny, but extraordinary scrutiny and caution. And I urge the planning board to continue to show its courage and good judgment by doing so. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make a public comment? Name?
Chris Holder, Craggsville. I have two letters. I'm going to read one of my own, but one is also from Cynthia Rodriguez. So first line, I just wanted to address some of the things that Kitty Brown was talking about because this seems to me like a real clear case of bait and switch. So, basically, in 2011, Smiley Brothers, Inc., owner of the Mohawk Mountain House, sold their land to Open Space Institute, and OSI assured this board that it would not develop any of the land. Every press release spoke of the iconic landscape and its value to the town of New Falls. Open Space Institute and Mohawk Preserve have collectively deceived the public. They are attempting to remove open space from bazaar public use for private development, and the planning board should not allow it. I'm going to read you something from August 4, 2011. This is from Robert Hannenberg from the Open Space Institute. Quote, "It's rare that you have the opportunity to protect 857 acres of prime Ulster County farmland in one fell swoop." And this is from Burke Smiley. Quote, this is from the same article. "The primary goal was to protect this landscape, which is one of the most beautiful in the region," said Burke Smiley. Quote, "Our objectives were firstly to retain open space for recreational use by the public. Secondly, for education as a historical site. Thirdly, for environmental research and to continue sustainable farming at Brook Farm." But we all know without one. That's not part of the quote. That's wrong about it. That's my position. And Smiley further added, quote, "The family wanted to be sure that this property was never developed." I want to quote that again. Smiley added, "The family wanted to be sure that this property was never developed." In this week's Kingston Daily Freeman and this week's New Falls Times, there are two PR pieces written about how the Mohawk Preserve is buying the entire 857 acres from OSI and protecting it. Both articles notably omit the 20-acre parcel to be developed. I think that's a shame. I think it's deceitful, and I think that it's intentional. For these reasons, I respectfully ask the planning board to deny any subdivision of the 857 acres that OSI and Mohawk Preserve promised to protect. And in regards to what Ms. Brown said, that came directly from Burke, from the Smiley family. You don't need to go to the Land Trust Alliance's website and read that. You heard it straight from the horse's mouth. They wanted it protected, and that's it. This is from Cynthia Rodriguez in New Falls. Dear planning board, this is to express two particular concerns I have in regard to the application resubmitted by the Mohawk Preserve subdivision of 857 acres of the New Falls Foothill Hills. One, one about what is being held back, and one about what has been revealed. The original application was rejected on the grounds of illegal segmentation related to the proposal development plan. And yet, the new application does not address the issue at all. The configuration of the purchase that will enable the plan has simply been drawn in a different way, but the intended development remains obscured and unexplained. I do not know on what grounds the planning board could or would accept such blatant disregard of the issue at the heart of its instructions. But in any case, given this persistent obfuscation, a full EIS would be even more imperative. The second concern is the open intent expressed in both this application and its predecessor to use public funding and publicly conferred advantages to enrich private interests. Subdivision into three parcels is requested of the total acres taken off the tax rolls when Smiley Brothers, Inc. sold it to OSI, presumably for perpetual preservation. But one parcel, 19.1 acres of prime real estate, would be retained only temporarily by OSI in order to be alienated from preservation shortly and sold outright for private development. At the same time, the largest of the parcels would be purchased by the Mohawk Preserve for its own development plan. And that plan includes the renovation of the testimonial gatehouse and the yet another visitor center at great cost and great detriment to the environment, and the clearing, widening, and restoration of the private, of the carriage road system urgently put in place to lead visitors to the Mountain House, a private business. Thus, newly restored the gatehouse and carriage roads would do what they were designed to do, lead paying visitors in grand style to the for-profit resort. But now through a more restricted part, that would continue to serve Mountain House patrons, as it always has, but with the added dispensation of the lands being removed from the tax rules and subsidized by the taxpayers of a more traffic-clogged and environmentally degraded New Falls. Clearly, a tremendous profit advantage for the Smiley business. Lastly, we were told that the third little .68-acre parcel is just a technical adjustment, but given the continued bailing of development plans and the overt relationship of the other two parcels to private interests, I cannot be at all reassured without more information and documentation that the .6-acre parcel is as innocent as we are told. I commend the planning board for its conscientious care for the interest of New Falls and the citizens so far in this matter, and I strongly hope your courage will not flag New Falls taxpayers should not be forced to pay for private aggrandizement. And any proposed development of our precious green space should be presented for public scrutiny in detail and examined in a full and meticulous EIS done by professionals free of any paint or crummy of the side of Mohawk Preserve or Smiley Brothers, Inc. Here is truly Cynthia Rodriguez.
Can I speak?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Tom Corral. I'm a like member of the Mohawk Preserve. I don't live in the town of New Falls. I'm a former vandal in Gardner, New York. And I plan to move back into the community. So, I take what's going on very, very serious. I serve right now as the vice chairman of the planning board in the Towne Valley, New York. I help write, comprehend some plans for the town. I help rewrite the zoning laws. So, I'm pretty active. I sat on the board of the Hudson Highland Trust for a while. So, I'm very, very familiar with the work that OSI performs. And really, it's to the extent... Well, let me take a step back and give you an example. I live on the south end, southernmost end of Frontstock State Park, which now amounts to about 36,000 acres. A main reason why it's accumulated 36,000 acres is because OSI was instrumental in preventing Boy Scouts of America... You made one example. Boy Scouts of America from selling to an organization that was going to privately develop a casino. I said adventure casino before. Well, in reality, OSI stepped up, secured the property. Now it's part of New York State Parks. We're very, very fortunate to have OSI. If anyone in the audience has ever been to their website and seen the extent and the magnitude of open space that OSI has created, not only in our area, but the entire country, the entire east coast of the United States, it's absolutely remarkable. The way I view it, it all comes at a cost. The view shed and everything that's being preserved for the people of New Falls is remarkable. You're getting a free ride. If you think you have an elephant in your backyard, well, I tell you, there's a lot of communities, there's a lot of counties, there's a lot of states that would love to take that elephant and just loop right into your backyard because I think it's the nature conservancy that has a statement. All will be preserved now. It's all that's going to be left in the future. So, keep that in mind, that view shed. That came at a cost. That was a vision. Smiley families had a vision like no other. That land is open space, not because somebody wanted to sell and put cookie cutter-type developments like you see in Orange County, places like that. They did diligence, and they stepped up, and they sacrificed. They put their money. As a planning board, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but as a planning board, I've heard repeatedly that the Mohawk Preserve has attempted to obstruct, to not provide enough information for the planning board to make a determination. I reviewed those documents because I'm very good. I have an engineering background. I looked at their whole entire site plan application. Out of 800 acres of land, they're talking about five acres of area disturbance. Am I kind of correct in that determination? That was only, I do the math in my head, but that's only a couple percent disturbance, a couple percent out of 800 acres. Like I said earlier, any entity that comes before the planning board can submit an application. New York State Town Municipal Law, your town attorney knows that. You can't prevent anyone from submitting an application. The obstruction that I'm hearing here, if they were so concerned, they should let this application go forward. And if they think it's segmentation, then you know what? Put your money together and get in Article 78 together if you're not sure. You know what? I ran this in front of a very, very prominent land use attorney, impeccable credentials. I've been involved in environmental battles from coast to coast. And you know what? He reviewed Mohawk Preserve's application, and he said, "Beyond a doubt, beyond a doubt, this is not segmentation." So, I hear repeatedly that there's obstruction on their part, that they're not submitting, that they're stalling all information. As a planning board, you know what you have to do. You have to determine lead agency, and then the process moves forward. There'll be scoping sessions. There'll be all the details that you guys know about. I'm not preaching to the choir here. It'll all get aired out. But to listen to this misinformation, this disingenuous, very disingenuous comments, the repeat half-truths over and over again, it must be very, very difficult for you as board members to sit there and listen to this. I don't get it. I really don't get it where you're coming from.
Who's being disingenuous?
All right, all right. This isn't a dialogue. Everybody has an opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much.
He's having a dialogue with me, so please be aware of that. And I'm an engineer also, but he's got credentials. We all do.
Hi, my name is Doug Gilmore. I'm in New Falls. I came here to get some information, but I'm starting to understand why all my neighbors are very upset. It must have been three years ago that Mr. Holden, did I pronounce that correctly? Met with all of us in the neighborhood and explained what the plan was. And we are on, what, the 12th revision of that plan? And now, the plan is to develop some of it. So, am I to believe that in two months, another plan can be submitted which will develop another parcel of land? Can this go on for 20 years until it's all sold? I don't understand this concept. When you purchased our house as our neighbors, we were told that this land could not be developed. And now it is being developed right behind our property, immediately behind our property. We're all for open space, but I feel like I'm dealing with Walmart. I feel as though I'm being manipulated. I feel as though a big corporation is just coming in and playing games. So, I would like Mohawk to submit a plan that they really stand behind. I'd like to know what the plan is. Are they set with it and move forward? It's ridiculous to keep revising things again. It was about three years ago. In good faith, we met. And everything is totally different than what we were told at that time. I don't like being manipulated. I'd like to be a good neighbor with Mohawk. I just have a real problem with this because they're a nonprofit that can continue to manipulate the public the same as some rich corporations.
Mr. Gilmore, can you just tell us where you live?
I'm in New Falls.
Address? No.
I'm not going to have one. Are you in the call?
I'm Patty Brooks, Lanesville. I'm representing...
Give me a call.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else wish to make any public comment? Does anybody else wish to make any public comment?
Hello, my name is Ralph Scamenti. I've lived around the ridge for the last seventeen years, and I've got to see a lot of changes around here. The proposed subdivision for the purpose of developing residential structure should be denied. This action is contradictory to the mission statement of the Open Space Institute, which states, quote, "Open Space Institute protects scenic, natural, and historic landscapes to provide public enjoyment, conserve habitat, working lands, and sustain communities, representing an effort to align the pieces of the landscape puzzle, and prevents fragmentation, which disrupts key wildlife horrors, impairs water and air quality, and diminishes the beauty and scenery of natural areas," unquote. It's also contradictory to the mission statements of all their affiliates and partners. The subdivision in question is in the view shed of the Mohawk Preserve and Skytop, and is on undeveloped farmland with extraordinary views of the Schlongo Mountains. The proposed residential structure is also unnecessary due to the fact that several large historical residential structures were also acquired by the same organization on this property. Utilizing the existing structures is more aligned with proper stewardship and land conservation ethics. With the proposed development of the Mohawk Testimonial Gateway woman, I can't see how more development in segmentation of the parcel in question has remotely anything to do with conservation and preservation of this parcel. Furthermore, OSI purchased the land at below fair market value utilizing donations from wealthy individuals that do not live around here. I'm not even sure that sales tax is paid due to the nonprofit status of this organization. On behalf of the Mohawk Mountain House, the Mohawk Preserve and OSI have laid out plans for the foothills with the land asset management plan and the lease to Glynnwood for running its farm incubator project. It's difficult to imagine why, all of a sudden, Mohawk has purchased all of the land and also acquired the lease for Glynnwood. I'm concerned that there's a lack of transparency with these two organizations and that the tactics of baitless switch have been employed. These organizations have effectively converted a taxable parcel and transferred sale to themselves and are now ready to charge everyone else, including the taxpayers, to use the land. The secret review as well should not be segmented and should be completed as a whole as these two organizations shape the town into their landscape puzzle for their own gains and seem to be pulling the wool over everyone's eyes, encroaching once again on their neighbors, increasing traffic and driving up taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to make any public comment? We've run a lot longer than we normally do, but I'll keep it open if anybody wishes to make any more. If not, we're going to move off public comment and move up to an application review. Sure, I'll cut out so the board's familiar with it.
Sure. Basically, at this point, you are looking at the cover sheet, which is showing the relationship of the entire 856.59 acres with the hillside lot on the easterly side of Butterville Road of 19.1 acres and the remaining lands, Lot Number Two of 836.89 acres. I do just want to ask one question before we go on. There were some, a couple of people who had mentioned that the original plan had been rejected by the planning board. My understanding was that we had just come here in June for informational purposes because we were fact gathering, wanted to hear from the general public so that we could go back and design a plan in accordance with what we felt the planning board and the general public had directed us. So I do just want to clarify for my own purposes that the planning board did not reject that plan and that we never withdrew formally. We went back and we're working on due diligence is what the idea was in our mind. So I just wanted to make sure that I was correct in that.
No, no, that's true. The application's been before us, it has sat before us, waiting additional information that was being promised to be sent to us as plan developed on it. So, no, the planning board did not, the planning board did not take any action on the application.
So the original two lot subdivision raised a lot of questions and issues in the general public because Mohawk Preserve at that point was only taking 500 some odd acres and all of the farmland was going to retain under ownership of OSI. And there were multiple concerns raised by the public about what was going to happen with the rest of the land. And it was difficult to try to tie two organizations down with a long-term land use plan. So over the course of the last six months, Mohawk has been able to obtain the financing to purchase the entire property so that it wouldn't be under their ownership. And when they came back before this board and you asked those tough questions, they would be the ones in charge of the property and being able to address those questions. The 19.1 acres, we always had stated was a separate lot, and I think there is some misunderstanding about what conservation and preservation means versus no development. When you take a 19.1 acre lot in a one and a half acre zone and you're proposing, God bless you, and you're proposing one single family residence on that parcel with limitations as far as citing it and landscaping and impervious surface, and that is conservation, that is preservation. It's not going to be sitting on top of the knoll like the houses at the end of Woodlot Road are, where they're visible from everybody from Butterville Road. So we do take exception to the fact that people are saying that it's contradictory to preservation and land conservation. In fact, we feel that it very much isn't keeping with it. I do want to distinguish between the subdivision and the site plan. The reason that I am here this evening is solely for the subdivision, so that the 836.89 acres can be separated from the 19.1 acres so that when this planning board is reviewing the site plan for the 836 acres, you are working with one applicant, with one site plan on the overall property. We do not feel that this is contradictory in any way for the board to be able to give a full, solid review of this proposed two lot subdivision and then continue with another more in-depth review when a site plan comes before you. This is totally separate between the subdivision and the site plan. What we do propose is a two lot subdivision with a lot line revision. Because the maps are so small, I do have some enlargement copies of what the lot line revision area is proposing. There were some questions about wanting to know how exactly this lot line revision needed to occur. Basically, there was a parcel of land that was conveyed to Smiley Brothers back in February of 1919. The deed into that property conveyed a parcel of land that included all of the lands up to the, what they called the westerly side of the road. Subsequently, in 1957, a survey was performed by C.J. Wilkins of the Jenkins property, and they called the boundary line being along the middle of the road. That created a deed overlap. At the point in time that we did the survey on this property, we brought that to the attention of Smiley Brothers, we brought it to the attention of Open Space Institute and Mohawk Preserve. Because of the fact that there was more than one party involved and we were interested in moving ahead with the sale of the property, it was decided at that point that Smiley Brothers would convey everything to Open Space Conservancy, and it was always proposed that we would come back before this board to convey not only the land of the overlap, but as you can see, there's an additional small parcel of land that would continue to be owned by Open Space Institute and then Mohawk. And it was decided at that point to convey everything to adjoining lands of Jenkins properties. It's a 683 by 40-foot approximate strip of land, and this will clear up a deed overlap. That's the sole purpose for that land transfer.
So both deeds claim that spot?
Both deeds claim that spot. The 1957 survey goes to the center of the road and the 1919 survey goes to the westerly side of the road. So, you know, both of the deeds claim it. You can run back the change of title, you can argue about it, you can have a quiet, you can go to court, but why? When you have willing landowners that are willing to convey a parcel of land and eliminate an overlap, that is the easiest, most unobtrusive way to settle it.
Is this right? Right along, I see that is right along the aqueduct now?
Yes, yes, it's right along the aqueduct. There was a company by the name of Degnan Land Contracting that bought up a lot of the properties and then conveyed them to the aqueduct. It was, you know, one of the, yeah, so there was quite a bit of...
Okay, 600 feet by about 40 feet?
Yes. So that takes care of the .6 acres. What I did for this evening's presentation, because I know that it is difficult to look at the smaller scale maps, is we did prepare a separate map of the... of the 19.1 acre tract of land located on the easterly side of Butterville Road. This property, as I stated previously, is the only parcel of the 857 acres that is located in the A1.5 zone. If you look at it in conjunction with the tax map plot, you can see the building envelope that we proposed in relationship to the lot sizes of the buildings around it. The applicants are willing to work with the town and expect to work with the town for developing a conservation easement on the property, as well as building restrictions and impervious surface restrictions. You will note that on the original map that we submitted to the town, we showed that the septic area would be on the westerly side of the proposed residence tucked against the wooded area. Once we started doing soil investigation at the site and we looked at what the soil sites were out there, we discovered that we would move the septic system up the hill because that's where the better B and C soils were. And if we put the septic down at the lower end, we would require a fill system. If we put it up at the upper end of the field, the soils are better, and we're either going to be getting a shallow trench or ending ground system. We're scheduled to do perks tomorrow, but I'm not sure that's going to happen now.
See where the water goes tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll see where the water goes tomorrow. So, I mean, we are proposing on this lot, no further subdivision. We're looking at footprint restrictions, limiting impervious surface, having no paving, restricting colors and materials of construction. Right now, there is an existing agricultural access lane. We're proposing to relocate the driveway for a potential residential structure to be tucked into the wooded area. It's actually cleared and flagged right now, if the planning board wanted to go take a look at it. In fact, we also have a proposed residence staked in the field because Open Space Institute was extremely concerned about making sure that the residence wasn't put too far up the hill, that it wasn't going to have a visual impact. So we staked it out in the field to make sure that we provided a building envelope around an area that they felt comfortable if anybody ever wanted to put a dwelling there. We also relocated the driveway so that headlights wouldn't affect any of the landowners on the southerly side when they were coming in and out of the driveway. So, you know, again, one last point, which I just discovered, is we've been working with OPRXP for some time, trying to actually get a map of where the listed limits of the historic site are, because they talk about a map that was on file and nobody seemed to be able to find a copy of it. So we just got an email. November 24th, they're in the process of scanning all of their records, but Kathleen LaFrank of Parks and Rec sent us a copy of the map that they had on file of where the original designation of the National Register of Historic Places was listed in 1973. And this dark line indicates where the parcel is. The blue shaded area is the 856 acres, and the hillside parcel actually is not within the National Register of Historic Places. So at this point, you know, the property is totally separated. It's not part of the programmatic plan that Mohawk has for the remaining lands, and it's not part of their contract to purchase it, and it's part of their contractual obligation that it be subdivided out and retained by Open Space.
Okay.
Open, any questions or you gentlemen want a pleasure of the board?
Right, I think you had a proposal before us, perhaps our development of the foothills project, going through the parking and development of the trails and doing the tosses along the way. The ability to purchase the entire segment, how does that impact what you presented to us this past year?
Sure. Well, first of all, when we first appeared before the planning board and after we completed the land asset management plan back in 2012, we at that time determined we could only purchase the 534 acres that was the original division line down the middle of this property. OSI at that time was going to retain the 323 acres that they had leased to Glynnwood. Since June, when we appeared in front of you, we have had an opportunity to explore purchasing the entire property so that the preserve could step up and become the owner and the steward of this entire property and to assume the Glynnwood lease from OSI. So Glynnwood has a 10-year lease on the property. They have launched their Hudson Valley Farm Business incubator, and we were able to, through some support from OSI and some other support, to obtain financing to purchase the entire property. Part of that purchase agreement includes OSI wanting to eventually retain these lands. However, these lands are part of the deed to the whole property, they're not a separate parcel currently. So we're before you to sever off this parcel so that it can become a separate subdivided lot, and then it will be re-conveyed to OSI, and it will be subject to a conservation easement that will limit it to the one structure in the building envelope proposed and keep all of the open farm and forest land around it open. And that will be a permanent statutory easement, a New York State conservation easement pursuant to Article 49, Title III, the environmental conservation law. And that will also, when we buy the entire property from OSI, OSI will impose conservation easements on Mohawk Preserve, on the 836.89 acres that we will retain. And those easements will specify the limits and the extent of our nature preserve uses. And that will include, you know, the proposed trailhead and trail restorations, which are just restorations of existing trails. And it will help OSI as the holder of those easements to make sure that both what the preserve does and what Glynnwood does does protect those conservation values, the view shed, the natural wildlife habitats, the open fields, and the forested areas. So again, we've agreed that in order to get this 19 acres back to OSI, subject to the easement, we need to create a separate lot, because it's currently not a separate lot, so that we can come back to you, hopefully early in the new year, with a site plan that's coterminous with the 836.89 acres. And I also would just like to point out, because there's the assertion made that our plans have changed, our plans have changed to the extent that we're no longer subdividing the 534 and the 323. But if you go back to the land asset management plan, this non-binding vision document we did for the entire property when we were asked to step up three years ago and determine whether we could manage it and own it. whether we could manage it and own it in whole or part, we determined at that time that the hillside lot had no programmatic value to OSI, although it was important to Open Space, I'm sorry, to Mohawk Preserve, and that OSI should either keep it and commit it to continued Open Space, or that there may be the possibility that they would want to sell it, subject to one home site in the future. Our understanding is they have no intent to sell it, but they do want to reserve a home site and prove there's a viable home site there so that it could be created as a lot. So I will leave with you the land asset management plan from 2012 with the reference to the hillside law and our commitment to place conservation easements on this property, and that has not changed.
Okay, we have just status of the conservation easements that you're working with OSI on. Where are they, why are they?
They will, they will allow the flexibility to install the trailheads that we're proposing and to also have the appropriate small-scale wayside structures that we typically have at Preserve, trailheads, signage, kiosk, and the like. They will permit possibly one small-scale education facility for environmental education that will be tucked into wood. Those will all be part of our site plan application, and so we want to make sure that you know what we've been doing also since June. And so I wanted to defer to my colleague, Peter Harris, who is our Director of Land Protection and Stewardship at the Preserve and also to Conex Site Design and Planning, LA.
So along with working on the purchase agreement for this property, which has been a huge undertaking for the Preserve in negotiating that, we've been doing a lot of due diligence associated with our site plan application. As you're well aware, we are proposing improvements, and we do need to do studies in order to prove viability of those improvements. So I'm going to go down a list of things we've been doing that we, as Glenn said, we're planning to pull together a resubmission for early next year. So we've been working on site restoration work with OSI, including cleaning up of farm dumps, removal of underground and above-ground fuel tanks at the farm sites, structural and architectural improvements to the Brook farmhouse, the Pine Farm barns, and we're actually planning for exterior renovations to the Testimonial Gateway, all in concert with the Historic Preservation Commission of the town. We've been working on detailed traffic assessments with our traffic engineer. We've been in communication with the planning board's traffic engineer, as well as county planning, as we do these traffic assessments. These assessments include existing traffic counts on 299 and local roads, turning movements at local intersections, and then Preserve trailheads, parking accumulation inventories, so that we can understand what are the peak times where there are traffic, potential traffic issues. Where are people turning? How are people parking? And when are they parking on the Preserve? This is all in an effort to inform our proposed trailhead on our site plan. We've been working on wetland delineations in the field, both at the Gateway ponds, at the Testimonial Gateway, and at the Humble Marsh, including survey location of those wetland delineations, and preparation of jurisdictional determinations that will be submitted to the DEC and Army Corps of Engineers in support of our site plan. We've done a comprehensive endangered threatened species assessment with our wildlife biologist from Barton LeJudas, and that will be packaged and submitted as an attachment to our full environmental assessment form. We've been working on our stormwater pollution prevention plan, including subsurface soil investigations and conceptual stormwater modeling to make sure that we have clean and treated water coming off of our proposed parking area. We've done archaeological work, including Phase 1A and Phase 1B investigations that will be submitted as an attachment to our full EAF. We've done other internal due diligence work, including continued assessments on our trail restoration plans for the existing carriageroad system in the foothills. We continue to study trail connections outside of those proposed trail restorations within the property, and we've coordinated with Glenwood's Hudson Valley Farmer Business Incubator Program on site management of farmlands, aesthetic improvements, and making sure that we maintain public access routes through the farm. All, we've also been working on revisions to our physical site plans, which the board will see. These are influenced by all the field conditions I just described in our investigation work, written comments by the planning board engineer that we received back in June, public comments that we received in the June meeting, and additional individual meetings with neighbors. We continue to meet with our neighbors in the surrounding area, soliciting input. All of this is influencing our revised site plan. We intend to package this in a comprehensive way for a planned resubmission to the planning board in early 2015. We've been pretty busy on this site doing our homework, and so that the planning board can make an informed secret determination.
Okay. Okay, I just, I think Dave, you just, you want to go over quickly?
Okay. I have one question first, Patty. Did you say that you cleared the driveway for the, where that's been moved?
It was flagged out, and there were no trees in the area. It's been clipped, brush hogged, you know, the scrub brush was taken out.
No big trees?
No, no trees.
You'll see that the line on the map looks a little jagged, we were interweaving around trees. Essentially, it's clearing whatever was down on the ground and multiform rows, so it was walk around.
We did an initial technical review of the plan. There is one new residence being proposed on the 19-acre lot. This 19-acre lot is basically separated by the Butterville right-of-way now. We had a few comments on the plan. One of them was this, the trail, the driveway, whether that was existing or something that's new. Any new, any new improvements? We need to see some details on how that's going to be done. Is it going to be paid? That's a question.
No.
We need to see site distance on the driveway. The plan notes the areas of the DEC and Corps of Engineer wetlands. We'd like to also see some kind of note that references the town wetland law. This was one of my recommendations, I needed to see a bigger--
Yeah, when I sat down and started looking at how I was going to present it to the board, I said, "Uh-oh."
We'd like to see the existing site features on the plan, any building structures.
On the 19.1 acres or the remaining?
Remaining, and you can use aerial photography, it doesn't have to be surveyed corners. EAF, we had a couple questions. There was some phasing and timing notes, and we presumed that that referred to the separate project that Peter was talking about. There's also a note in the EAF about pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. If you can give a little more narrative on that, on how this all ties together, and just put that in the back of the EAF, that'd be helpful. There is a question on D2M about noise levels being increased. They will increase during construction, that should be noted. E2E has to do with the soil types. It looks like you have the soil types now, so let's just fill in the blanks on that. And I think there was a mention about a habitat assessment that was done. I'm curious on that, if there's anything in this area that showed up as a possibility of being on this particular lot. If the board could have a copy of that habitat assessment for the records. There were a couple town code-related issues. Basically, there are weavers that would be requested for the subdivision improvements that really aren't applied on this water sewer, whatever. You do need to see more detail on the septic system. And again, the driveway, we did look at the driveway as far as slope, and it's relatively mild in there, it's less than 10%.
Yeah, we are working to obtain Board of Health approval, just so we can prove that we can get Board of Health approval on the lot and that it will be as least impactful type system as can be proposed. So, you know, we wanted to make sure that we came away with something that the board could feel comfortable with.
The other permit would be a town highway--
Highway permit.
Cut.
Okay. What, have any outstanding questions at this time? I, I, I'm not sure how I'm going to proceed going forward on this, so I won't be scheduling a public hearing at this meeting.
I have a couple questions.
Sure. I just wanted to let you know that I wasn't going to that, I'm going to figure out my structure.
I'm sort of unclear why-- I don't know, who owns the property right now? Open Space Institute, right?
Open Space Institute, yes.
Now, they're going to convey it to you and you're going to convey it back to them? I don't, I don't understand that.
Okay, so right now, the 19 acres is part of the same deed, it's all one parcel, except--
No, I realize that, I'm not sure why they're not doing the subdivision, so why are you doing the subdivision and then conveying it back to them?
They are, they are part of this subdivision. Patty's here representing--
Yeah, I'm representing Open Space Institute, and again, you know, timing is always an issue. And the, we were trying to move forward with the subdivision approval, then we ran short on time. We're getting towards the end of a year, there are financing and grant applications--
Not to cut you off, Patty, but I understand all that. My concern is this back and forth, if these promises are getting convoluted between he promised, well, he didn't promise, now he promises, and that's a little bit confusing. I'm sort of, I don't know how a property can be taken off the tax rolls and then used for residence. Like, what happens to those taxes? 19.1 acres of property taken off the tax rolls for three years, and now it's going to be used for residence? Is it going back on the tax rolls? Or you, or that's somehow a profit-making thing for OSI or Mohawk Preserve? I don't know who owns it then.
There are three structures already on this property, the existing structures, that through an arrangement with the assessor, along with a homestead parcel, were carved out for continued payment of taxes. Those taxes have been paid by Open Space Institute and will continue to be paid by the Mohawk Preserve. Those are the mission, the three houses that we don't, we don't have a mission-related use for them. We have private tenants in them, and they're, they're paying market rents, which help offset the tax.
And what is the mission purpose of this?
And so that same thing will continue here. If this becomes a private home site within that 19 acres, I would assume the assessor would want to do the same thing, which is carve out a homestead for taxable. If it's a non-open space use, a non-charitable use, then the assessor would probably want to do the same thing she did on the three houses on the parent parcel that are currently paying taxes.
It seems like somebody's going to live in a very nice house on 19.1 acres and pay taxes, maybe not at all, maybe on two acres.
I think that--
Just as a taxpayer, you know, I'd find that objectionable.
The assessor would have to make the use determination.
They would.
Can I, can I just address that? So you, there's a couple things you had there. First was the back and forth with the transfer. So currently, Mohawk Preserve is contracted by the entire 857-acre single-tax parcel, which is the foothills. Part of that agreement is we, as we don't have a mission-related purpose for 19.1 acres, we're not actually paying for that. We're required to convey that back to OSI. So the purchase price is reflective of 836.89. We need to take ownership of everything initially, perfect this legal subdivision of the 19.1 that we are technically not buying, and convey that back to OSI. And for the reasons that Patty described, this is essentially a standalone lot as it exists right now. In fact, in 2011, when the planning board approved the subdivision, a right-of-way offering along Butterville Road was approved by the planning board, effectively bisecting the hillside lot from the rest of the parcel, even though it remains a single-tax parcel in one deed. So there are some mechanics at play here that, you know, we could argue this is already a standalone lot. Second is the proposed single-family residence that we're showing. In order to subdivide a lot in any town in New York State, you need to prove the viability of that lot as a building lot, and as a permitted use allowed in that zone. A single-family residence in the A1.5 zone is what we think is the worst-case scenario, the largest, most intensive use that you could have in that zoning district. So we are required by the subdivision process to show a proposed single-family residence, a proposed driveway, and a Board of Health-approved septic system and well. So although it's OSI's intention to not develop this at all, we're actually required to show these proposed improvements in order to perfect the subdivision with the planning board.
This is actually more likely, if there was a structure built in that building envelope, it would be, more likely be a barm and a house to support continued agriculture.
So what we've tried to do is a lot of due diligence on the ground and understand things like impacts on views, impacts from views from neighboring properties down onto here. And we've perfected a building envelope where essentially the residential properties on Woodlot will not be able to see this residence. Views from the ridge will not be able to see this residence because it's hidden behind the trees. Views from the north across the Van, Old Van Alts field, you will not be able to see this as there's an existing hedgerow with cedar trees located right there. There is one house on High Passage--
I get all this, I get all that. Thanks.
I had a question for Lyle, because I didn't understand the point you were making about someone could live on a privately-owned lot that's only--
Well, if we improve the subdivision, it's a valuable lot.
Right.
OSI or Mohawk Preserve, whoever owns it, can then sell it to an individual.
They can sell part of it to an individual?
They can sell the 19.1 acres to an individual.
They would sell the--
They can't sell anything less.
I didn't understand your example of two acres.
No, well, they're showing, they're showing, they're showing that that's the building envelope, that's what they're going to use, and they're talking about easements to preserve the rest of it. Isn't that what you're saying?
Yeah, and as it is with any lot in the town, and I probably could get the assessor to confirm this, an assessment on a parcel of land is for the residence on it and the land surrounding it that constitutes the residential lot. In a 1.5-acre zone, it would be a 1.5-acre lot surrounding that residence. And then the residual acreage gets assessed at a substantially lower rate. So if you have a 20-acre parcel, anybody, whether it has a conservation easement or not, and I can't speak for whether there's a less value for a conserved additional acreage or more value, because you have the ability not to have anybody else around you. But regardless, anybody in the town, regardless of whether it has a conservation easement or not, if they have 19 acres, they're not paying a tax assessment on that 19 acres at the same rate per acre.
That's my understanding as well, that's true.
I think there are properties on, on OSI that they rent now, out, and they pay taxes on those pieces of property. And I think you were just trying to allude to it that if something was built here and was rented out, it would fall under the same type of category that would result in taxes being paid.
And then to further answer Mr. Nolan's question, if it were sold away from OSI's ownership to a private buyer of the entire 19 acres, presumably they could go entirely back on the tax rolls.
Yes. And the three building lots that are current, taxes are currently paid on in the parent part of the foothills are the Hasbrook House off of 299, Kleinakil Farm, and the Turner House at the end of Pine Road. Those are the rental units on the foothills property.
Okay, Lyle, okay for him? Peter?
I guess I just misunderstood, there's no scenario, Lyle, where someone would own two acres of this 19-acre lot.
I have a question. I'm new to this project, I'm new to the board, but why wouldn't you present your entire plan now, if you're almost ready to do that? I mean, you're almost there, the neighbors would like to see it, they're all here, and maybe they would feel better if they knew what that plan looked like. That sounds like it's going to come before us in January. is going to come before us in January anyway.
So, a couple of reasons. One, we're contractually obligated to convey this land back to OSI. That's part of our purchase of the land, and that needs to happen as soon as possible. And two, submitting in early 2015 is, we're still doing our homework. It's the best-case scenario. And this use in and of itself would be a type-two action. It would not require a secret review, a single-family residence on 20 acres.
Absence of, absence of subdivision.
Absent of subdivision. So, what we're trying to present is, and inform the board is that we can take this 19.1 acres and put it in a, in a context where you understand what the end use is going to be on the 19.1. And not, it doesn't have to necessarily wait for our site plan application process, which we anticipate will take several, several, several months.
Adele, too, I just want to offer, too, that SEER does provide for this mechanism of lawful segmentation under six NYCRR 617.3G1, which is in the, I gave you the law cited, a copy of it with the submittal. What the lawful segmentation analysis requires us to show is that whatever we do with this piece of property isn't practically determinative of the next property, the next development plan that's going through, and that it's no less protective of that plan. So, meaning that that full plan has to still go through its, all, its entire discretionary reviews and its entire secret process. This is one minor aspect which stands on its own. I would just, I, you know, I submitted this, this narrative. I know some people have questioned the ability to do lawful segmentation. I would just say that this is done in towns throughout New York State. It's been done by this planning board. I've done it before this planning board for the Empire State Bank. That was a number, number of years ago. But George was here. Dave was here at the time. I don't know if any other members were here. And I think it's been done fairly recently, too. But I would defer really to George.
Most recently, it was done in connection with the Pyramid subdivision, where the Christ the King Church lot was created. Then a building lot was created next to that because the location of wetland, which made it impractical to reconfigure the lot in any other way. So, it has been done, the most recent one was done in 2011. And I think, I'm not sure about the date for Christ the King, but I think it might have been 2007, 2008.
And then also, you'll only be dealing with one applicant. There's been a lot of confusion about Open Space and Mohawk, and who's in charge, and who should we be going to, and who's answering the questions, and who's going to be accountable. And by doing the subdivision now and separating them, Open Space Institute will be out of the picture, and Mohawk will be the only applicant, and they'll be the ones who have to answer 100% to the board.
To clarify a point, when Mohawk Preserve acquires this property and then later reconveys it, you and that, Mohawk Preserve is the party which will be imposing those conditions.
Correct. Yes. There's actually going to be mutual conservation easements. Open Space Institute is putting conservation easements and restrictions on Mohawk Preserve when they sell the land to them. Then when Mohawk Preserve sells back, conveys back the 19.1 acres, they're going to be.
Those two people trust each other.
Plus, we're here also to hear from the board of what conservation restrictions and easements and, and you would like to see on this 19.1 acres as part of this secret review.
Who would be the enforcement entity, or the, the party that would receive the conservation?
The grantor would be the enforcer. So, in the case of this, the Mohawk Preserve.
But again, we want the opportunity of having the board have input on those conservation easements at this point in time as part of this secret review.
Right.
Okay. I want to make sure I didn't misstate that.
So, before there's this conveyance back, you anticipate having conservation easements that the board can review?
And those, those restrictions would be perpetual on with the land. We would also anticipate adding subdivision plac notes to that effect, too, which are within the chain of title now.
Do you have, do you have an example of typical conservation easement that Mohawk Preserve?
Yes. I, I don't have one with me, but in the, in the land asset management plan that I mentioned, on page 75 and 76, we've articulated the, the range of restrictions that will go into the easements on all of this land.
Adele, Adele's ready.
I'm looking at this little form here that asks a couple of questions. Will the proposed action have outdoor lighting? And you answered no. I mean, so does that indicate any kind of?
That would be in the site plan. We'll review that.
Right. But I'm just saying, this, this was something that got answered by you, right?
By me, yes, absolutely. And again, I did not consider a overhead light on a residential structure to be out, outdoor lighting per se. A lot of these things are subjective and can be further restricted with notes and, but yes, I mean, obviously, there's going to be your typical residential lighting, but no outdoor lighting.
Tom, anything?
I'm just somewhat confused on why we're not, why OSI is not doing it upfront, and they're here, not here presenting why they want the subdivision. They are the current owners of the property.
I am. I'm OSI.
Okay. But why does it have to be transferred and flipped back? It just, it just doesn't seem like the clean.
When we made the application, we were not thinking that the transfer would take place from Open Space Conservancy to Mohawk Preserve so quickly. We thought we were going to get final subdivision approval on this, and then the transfer would happen to Mohawk. Because of year-end transfers and grants and different financing purposes, it looks like they are trying to now close before year-end. I made this application with the intent that Open Space Institute was going to retain ownership of this property until the final subdivision approval was granted. But again, there, there have been some concerns and some allegations that we're flip-flopping and pulling and pushing and submitting and then withdrawing, and, and I didn't want to do that. So, I wanted to stay the court. Once we made the application, we thought that we were going to, you know, be able to move forward and that they wouldn't be selling the property till Mohawk till next year. But again, some things have changed from a financing perspective, that they may be required to close sooner. Either way, the plan is not changing. You know, the, the plan is always what the plan was. Open Space owns everything now. When all is said and done, regardless of who the owners are over the next six months, the end result is going to be that Open Space Institute owns the 19.1 acres and Mohawk Preserve owns everything else, and Mohawk Preserve will be making the application for site plan.
So, I have one more question. So, if, let's say, they get granted this 19.1 acre, which you have to show at least one house on it, the OSI might decide not to do anything with that.
Correct.
And put that in writing, or, you know, and actually put that on a deed?
They probably would not put it on a deed. At, at this point in time, as per my conversation with Open Space this morning, they said that if anybody called them tomorrow from a newspaper or anywhere else and said, you know, are you building a house on that, at this point in time, they have no plans. Would they say they are never going to build on that? No. You know, we are approving it for one single-family residence on 19 acres with significant conservation easements. And I think that that is a very, very reasonable and prudent preservation.
We've got to maintain a building, building lot.
No, I, no, no, I understand. But it's talking about having restrictions all around. I want to know how far the restrictions are going.
The restrictions would not only be on all the open portions, but would also put site design limitations on what's built within the acceptable building area.
So, for example, a maximum square footage of that residence, colors and building treatments, and contained within this, what we're proposing as the building envelope. So, no other structures would be outside of that predetermined area. And we've tried to, we've tried to strategically cite that to be as the least impactful as possible.
No, no, I understand. Okay, thank you.
But your application also says the structure will be immediately built, immediately in the application.
Tim, this is in dialogue.
What you're, what you're hoping for is a, is a subdivision separating the 19 acres from the 565. And you don't anticipate a planning board review that would deem a, you, you see the 19 acres ending up as a, as a type-two action under SEER. But it remains to be seen whether the 536 ends up being a type-one or type-two.
Regardless, this is a type-one action. This subdivision itself is absolutely a type-one action.
I think, but Peter was saying is that if you didn't have a lot line revision, you could presumably go into the building inspector and get a building permit for a house without any environmental review. But we have a lot line revision, so we have to come here. That's, that's not.
The whole thing is going to be a type-one.
That's correct.
Because of where it's located and landmark and everything else. And this, and this is, this.
Therefore requiring a full EIS.
Full EIS.
It creates a presumption.
A full EAF.
Right, correct.
But then, so you're gathering information in terms of wetlands and habitats and artifacts and stormwater. So, the planning board would still have to determine whether it's a, requires a full EIS.
You would need to make a determination of significance.
Right.
On our site plan application.
Until we review, material is presented in a clear package.
Right. And our proposal is that the planning board take the hard look on the 19.1 acres, which is the lot that at this point in time, we're showing any development on. And that the development of the remaining lands, which would be under the ownership of Mohawk, would get that full hard look of the impacts during the site plan process.
This requires a don environmental determination.
Oh, yeah.
This, this application.
Okay. Like I said, I'm, want to cogitate on this a little bit about what's the best, best approach to do. I'm concerned, my, the concern I have is not confusing the public with a public hearing on the subdivision and then turning it around and having a public hearing on the site plan. Because a lot of the same issues will occur at both hearings. And so, you know, my feeling was to do it all. But if there's a gap between the subdivision application and when I get the material in for the site plan review, then I would think I'd have to split them up and do them two separately. But I'm not quite there yet. I just want to make sure I can get, get it documented as the way we want to go with that and, and let the board review the choice that we make. So, I want to have a discussion with George and then a draft out to the board members of an approach, which, which we're going to keep them, keep them together, we're going to separate them out, and what the sequence on it. And I'm going to make assumptions that, I'm going to, well, a couple assumptions I'll have is, you have everything to me by January 15th, February 15th, March 15th. And what do I do under that type of thing? So, I would have a, a feel of which way I want to go. Obviously, the longer it takes to get the full application to me on site plan, the more moons that I got to separate out the two applications. Yeah.
Just have a question. On this 19.1 acre parcel, is it going to be no further subdivision on it?
Yes. That'll be one of the many restrictions that, again, we're open to discussing with the board what their issues and concerns are.
And then flip side is, you know, the keys on conservation easements and restrictions that OSI is putting on you for the purchase of the big parcel and, and the restrictions that you're putting on them are key in understanding and review of this, this application. So...
But one thing I just wanted a little clarification on is, you know, I, I understand the idea is to, to subdivide out the 19 acres, and the option is left open for OSI to sell this 19 acres. But if anything gets built there, it has to be built within the parameters that you've outlined here. But you did say that a barn could be built there. Like, why did you say that? Is there?
Well, this is in, in the A1.5 district, an agricultural district. It's, it's very conceivable that a single-family residence would not be built here. Simply an agricultural structure could be built here.
So, is that purely hypothetical?
Purely hypothetical.
We have to look though, we have to look at the under-seeker. We have to look at the worst-case analysis.
The worst case is a single-family.
Would be a single-family.
The most impacted.
The most impacted.
Currently, this is agriculture, the field tamed. I mean, there's active agriculture happening here. That, it being continuing to be used as agriculture would be a continuation of this existing use.
So, OSI could build a barn there, or they could sell it and the new owner could build a barn there. But the most impactful situation would be OSI sells it and someone else.
Build a single-family residence.
Now, the hypothetical barn would have to be constructed in those parameters?
That's correct.
The whole idea is, is to be comfortable that wherever they're putting to tighten up the building envelope, so it doesn't really matter if it's a single-family home or barn or something else to that effect. This is where you're going to locate.
Would the board be interested in performing a site visit to understand his current map? I mean, there's nothing like standing out there in the field and seeing staked-out lines and.
All the things strung tight together.
Sunny day.
I don't know.
It's very accessible, so even to, not to mine.
Always would be there.
And no, no quorum, obviously.
We won't take any action, not to worry. Guys, good, thank you. For Nate from Kelly.
Okay.
And try to get up there and then take a walk towards the corner.
Okay.
We have to. Snowshoe up there.
Who places the restrictions on the building envelope that is shown here? So, let's say we approve this, and we're looking at this site plan. Somebody else wants to buy it, and they can only put this or something else on, and that is shown where? In the deed?
Oh, it's shown on the filed subdivision map. It's shown.
That that's all they can do. They can, someone can't say, I bought this and I want to put one house because that's all I can do, but I want to put it here.
No.
Well, there is, you can try to go through a process of adjusting, but it's, it's easier to put it where it's shown. Much easier.
And, and in this particular instance, not only would there be, what we are proposing is that there would be subdivision restrictions that would be put on the filed subdivision map, which would be approved and dictated by this body, but also in addition to that, the conservation easement that Mohawk Preserve is going to place on Open Space Institute when the land is conveyed back to them. So, it's got a double protection.
Did we get to see those restrictions?
Yeah.
Yes, sure.
You can help define those.
That's what, one of the things we're looking for from this board is input on, you know, and, and that's why it would be great to go out there. Because we sat out there and, you know, walked up and down this line and looked at where every single one of those cedar trees is placed and sighted the house based on that, and sighted the house so that when you're standing here, the knoll is so high that you can't see, you can just see the roof line from this house. All of those things were taken into careful consideration. And when you come out and look at it, if there are other restrictions or concerns that this deed has that we haven't thought about, that's the, that's the time to discuss them so that we can.
So, George, you're saying that even if it's, even if the restrictions say that a house can only be sighted here, you're saying that technically it could be sighted somewhere else? But what would that process look like? They have to go before this board? That new owner would have to.
It would look like what would happen with the Jewett Farm. There is a building envelope within a conservation easement that's on that farm. They had proposed to relocate that building envelope. No new building, moving the building envelope. I believe that was in 2010, and they went away because it was just too complicated and too time-consuming and too expensive.
I don't think I've ever seen it achieved. I've seen it attempted, but I don't know.
You're saying technically it's possible.
It's possible, but unlikely, and it's not easily undertaken by someone.
Well, in order for the Mohawk Preserve as a grantor of a conservation easement to amend the easement, we would have to be assured that there would be no compromise to the conservation values we seek to protect by moving that home site. And the, the work's been done here upfront, the due diligence to make sure that home site is in the least impactful part of that property. So, if a future buyer were to come to the Mohawk Preserve and ask for that home site to be changed, there would be a very rig- to be changed, there would be a very rigorous and high standard under a conservation easement to have to, you know, to... Easement amendments are rare.
They would have to get something from you for the conservation easement. And they still would have to come before the planning board.
As you say, they'd have to go there.
Right, because you'd have flat notes there.
So, in this case...
Double whammy.
Double whammy.
Or they come with a proposal that's a whole lot less impactful.
That's right. It could be better.
Right.
See, one of the things may be that if there were a barn that were going to be proposed here, it may need to be situated in a specific location to make it work for that particular purpose. Which you wouldn't know about that.
So that's an example of it as a reserve.
Okay.
Mike, I do have one question, just as kind of housekeeping. But as far as establishing an escrow here with the board, do you want OSI to establish that? I'm trying to get that question and maybe talk to Bob, Andy or somebody.
Yeah, you know, to the extent... We'll have an escrow account, but to the extent that, you know, we change hands on the subdivision and go to a site plan and that we can do it currently, yeah, we're going to need more. And I'll try to keep it as separated as possible, but...
How do you talk to Bob to be...
Yeah. All right.
Does the board want to consider leading?
The first thing is, what point need to review? I'd like to make a motion that the planning board become the lead agency on the... Open Space Institute's subdivision, two lots, subdivision. Second. Lyle made the motion. Here, he made his second. Any discussion on it? I got one. George, you want to roll in lead agency on the site plan or do that separately?
Well, I think we can do it as one notice. I think we should do it as one mailing with two notices.
That's what I... Okay, so we make a motion for a lead agency. Lyle made the motion, Peter seconded to be lead agency for OSI's two-lot subdivision. And for a discussion, all those in favor? Get a motion for lead agency for the Mohawk Preserve site plan. So move. Man, Peter. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on it? All those in favor? Okay. That goes out in 30 days. We've got lead agency status on it. I want to write out and get the board to review our procedures for doing it. But I talked with George, it's really to clarify things. These are two separate applications going before us. They just involve everybody in the same thing. So the first application is OSI subdividing the property into two lots, essentially. The second application, and showing that they have a buildable lot with appropriate conservation easements, which will be designed going forward. The second application is a continuation of the Mohawk Preserve's site plan. The foothills project, we'll call it. But to the extent that this adds, you know, X hundred acres to that site plan and any impacts that that has is what we'll be taking a look at on it. So, we'll end up having a public hearing on both applications. Best I can do is keep them separate, but they will get meshed together as we go through the process.
Well, Mike, just a question on the notices. Presumably, George and Kelly will take care of notices. What do you want as inclusion for the circulation of all the involved agencies?
Well...
EAF application maps.
Yeah, the application, the supporting narrative that has been developed. If that needs to be updated, I would say we should... Dave should take a look at it before it's circulated. But I think it would be beneficial to update it. And the plan sufficient to show the location of the property. How many sheets do you have in the...
Four. Well, it'll be five now that I hit the 100 scale, I guess.
And the historic preservation map, which you...
That'll just be a small eight and a half mile.
That should be included because it is relevant to type 1.
All right.
Patty, we can get all that to Kelly.
Wherever she may be.
If it's done by the 24th, we can send it out at close.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You sure you can tell her another one? I can tell her another one. That isn't original, piece of artwork.
I know, that's why I said it.
Are you conduct?
I also want to see where exactly the house is since I haven't seen that.
Here, because obviously your house itself doesn't... But your house is like right here. So this is about 100 feet into... This is all wooded. This is the field.
Where's the road going out?
Middle of the wood. Let's say, yeah, let's say there is a... There's a tiny pole right on the tree. Here's the driveway. And here's their house.
Well, I don't know. Traffic comes down here at 45, 50, 60, 70, 80, 90. This is a blind spot. That's why this... This one moves down here. Because the... Being dark along here and now you're bringing out another road. I think it's really... Why was not the existing lane from that property here?
The reason that we were pulled off the wood is because we felt that it would be tucked into wood and less of a... It's on... House here. Right, you're very close to the line. The driveway here, where it was in a narrow strip, where there is like more impactful on this house.
Well, this is an existing... Well, this is an existing road. I don't understand why you don't use an existing road. You're kind of... Created, likes to me.
Well, I guess we have it. It's about 100 feet away from... I'm glad to hear that input now because now if Bob can look at it, we can address that.
But you're already cutting things. Why are you... I don't understand this. If it's an existing road that's already the preserved land, why do not come behind the field? If you're going to develop this as an agricultural area, potentially, why cut another road?
I definitely agree with you. I definitely agree with you.
Yeah, plus this is a very dangerous section of the road. Trust me, there's cats killed on this road. I have a grandson that I will not let out there. And they moved to business here because of the danger of this road. Well, I know that, but that was one of the big ones. That this is a traffic hazard on this section.
I know you like to discuss this. Can I still have a planning board meeting to finish up on? Yeah, I just wanted to think.
We can see all your flats. We're seven, I've got there.
14. Oh, that's my property.
So we see all your flats. But I've been wanting to...
Again, we were concerned that a professional driveway here would be...
I know.
Yeah, we definitely look at all the options.
So how do I get out there and show you that this is not a good place?
I'm going to bring it up to the advocates and I know that they have contact information. So I will make sure that somebody contacts you. My problem.
I got a question for you.
I don't know if I can answer it, but...
The re-existing residential structures, I don't know.
No, you're on the...
The board that we discussed tonight.
Think out loud.
It is Mohawk, okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't... I didn't understand because there is a lot of...
And as long as they're non-programmated, they would have to be...
Okay, okay, so that's what it's...
This is for... Yeah, I just wanted to see where the house was. I was stupid because it was hard to tell because the nap I have is just... Yeah, I think you just have the eye down. Yeah, and it doesn't show. Just show me again on here where the actual house is. Not only is it state, but there are... What's the state with... How am I going to be impacted? They go carefully.
Which road is this here?
This is Butterbell, this is mine. Did you get our...
Yes, yes, I did. We have that right here.
Okay, yeah, because that has... But, yes, they actually are probably... You want me to do it on the mouse key? Yeah, I got it.
No, no.
Oh, oh!
No, don't worry. You could have just...
Yeah, I just wanted to...
I know. I'm impressed. You didn't rush anybody.
I gave now. I always like to... I like it better when they come in and have... I'll highlight it and I'll give you the scene. I said, "Okay, that's good, bud."
If you're worrying on TV, you would probably do that. After my experience with planning, sometimes... If there's a camera, people play to the camera. It's one of the wonderful and horrible things about the cameras.
Yes, actually.
This planning board's had cameras for a long time. A lot of the ones I've covered, you know, like over on the other side of the ridge, that don't happen. And it's just, it's pretty quiet.
Understood. All right.
You need to download the land.
Yeah, you get some...
But if you wanted to get... You just have to wait and...
Yeah, I'm going a lot faster. Because I know this is not...
But it does, it does. It's the... The whole section of the water is... Conservation easement that's going to be placed on.
And despite our careful... I know we're taking... More to the back. Yeah, I was there for a couple years to administer this system.
But I understand that...
Really, yes.
Because they... The whole issue that the show was coming to the table.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's... So it's very hard to take that back. That makes it difficult. I understand why that's...
Point six two.
But that, yeah, but that really is...
The planning board would like to reconvene. They sent the constellations outside. Thank you. Yes. Okay. They can't fold them, they can't get them out. See that? All right.
Yeah. Thanks, Chris.
Okay. All right, I have really two things I wanted to bring up. One is, George, you want to talk about the initiative?
Last week, the governor announced a solar... Community stolen in New York, which is supposed to be an effort to support the development of solar power communities that are interested in doing that. I emailed this afternoon to do to you is press release. It has many quotes in it from people who are on different things. But it may be beneficial to consider how that could work with the town's interest in moving forward with sun solar production facilities and making that process moving. And I'm not sure to what extent there are already an existing community collaboration that's going on, but if there isn't, that's something that's trying to promote. So the planning board and other school boards could work together to make it happen more easily and more comprehensively.
Okay. The other thing I had on, I met with Maurice, who was from the village, and proposed that we have a joint village-town planning board meeting. Looking probably sometime in March. But again, this is an area that has possibilities and to bring up areas that we want to talk about. Generally, you get into those conversations is where we border with them. Zoning-wise, what are the things that we have in common? What are the things that we're looking at? What things are they looking at? I don't recall having one with the village ever. So I think it's an opportunity that we have and just talk about it. But think about some of the issues that we do have, especially when we're looking at things going on in the village and things that we have here. We'll set up a date.
What are some examples that you think we can talk to?
Route 32 North. Route 32 North.
Route 32 North is my favorite. How do... You know, we have some commercial developments along there. What do we want to see in our designs of what we want people to build? One of the interesting things is it's commercial on one side of 32 North and it's not on the other side. But we have different buildings, different commercial establishments on both sides of the street. How do we want that to interact with their B3 zone going into the village? And how we can tie those things together from a zoning standpoint? What should we be looking at? Should we create something unique for 32 North that doesn't apply to Main Street? And create small businesses or, you know, what we can develop there and what they're envisioning going forward? So that's one of the areas. I think there are a couple others I put it out to Maurice to check with his board are things that are going on. But it's wide open. It's really just get acquainted some of the rules. It's really just get acquainted, some of the rules and regulations. What are we doing and what are they doing? And can we do some of those things together? Or is it jointly, just establish some interaction with them?
Can I ask you something? Would signage come in to play with that?
Sure.
I mean, we really need to do something about that.
Oh, gosh. Get a rope and hang myself. Signage is very, yes. We've done, we, you know, we've done extensive things, but to look at them. And that could be another area that we can see where we, see where we comment up and see where we're different. I think just getting an understanding of that is the first step in doing that.
But that's a good point, too.
Yeah.
So comprehensive, there's a joint comprehensive plan. That would be interesting. Do you have a schedule for that, by chance? Maybe that could be the first question. Is there going to be a joint comprehensive plan?
So, I'm not wishing for the meeting with the town, because the town gets, it's got a few more higher priority things running around here. It's like getting an office working, and then where do we go from there? Is probably on that. But we'll see where things settle out a little bit. But I think there's a benefit to meeting with the village and just seeing how they operate. And their schedule and ours are, we don't have a lot of applications before us neither today. So it's a good opportunity time-wise to do it. Other than that, we don't have a second meeting this month. And we won't meet again until the January meeting in 2015. And then the second meeting in January is going to be a workshop. If you guys got ideas of what we want to talk about at the workshop, you know, let's go over it. I think some of the things that you might want to talk about at a workshop are, from a zoning perspective, what are the things that we run up against that impact us? Whether we spend a lot of time trying to figure out what we want to do where. Or maybe we should be putting in something, because we constantly ask of that same, same thing.
One thing that we probably should put on the agenda for that meeting is the traffic guidelines. Traffic study guidelines from the Transportation Access Management.
Oh, access management.
Right, access management guidelines.
There's three things I really want to kind of review. The wetland law, what's the role of the planning department, the planning board, in dealing with wetlands? What's the procedures? What's kind of checklist? What are we, what are we doing on that? Access management is another checklist that we have to have. What are the criteria that trigger that thing? Or whether we have anyone set up sheet for us to know that whether it's triggered or not on it? And those are the, at least the two new ones that I know of that we've...
Stormwater? Town is an MS4 now, too.
Okay, what's, what's it really mean for us from a planning board's perspective on that? So I think those are the, and again, it's open, just understand what we got. And how do we incorporate that in our review process? Where should we bring it up? Should we develop something for it as we go through each application? And get ourselves familiar with what's really in the code and how it impacts us? Okay?
Well, it might be a good idea to, right now, we haven't seen subdivisions for a while, but there is a cluster subdivision requirement that used to generate some agenda what was put into play. And it might be a good thing to look at that and see if it can be made more effective and efficient.
Yes. But that...
How does that relate to a village, a meeting with a village planning board?
This would be for the February workshop.
Oh, we're not talking about the village.
Yeah, we have, these are, we're looking at things we're going to do in the workshop. Our own workshops.
But it might be interesting to see what they do. They have an interesting situation with Two Mohawk, where there's housing that's being developed for... For more than it looks like it's...
Understand that is, yeah.
It's a single family that's there.
Right. But...
Yeah, I'm actually before the village ZBA tomorrow to appeal the certificates of occupancy at Two Mohawk.
Oh, so then you could provide a... It's an interesting question, because I think it may come into play on the LP site, because that's been discussed as potentially a student housing project that would have a higher level of use than a typical single family. And there's no distinction in the code between the two.
Right.
But there will certainly be a distinction in experience of having five students living in a house versus you're standing two or three people.
Yeah, again, that's another area we should have some discussion on going forward. If a house, single-family house becomes a rental, what other firm building code? Or from a building inspector? Or what, what things should we be including in it? I know the village spent Eon defining a family. We don't have any definitions, I think.
No, you do.
We do.
Five people are fewer, if you have a single household. There is a definition.
There is, yeah.
Actually, Stacy and I have discussed in the context of the group home. So it is, it is there. Interestingly, five is the number that was sort of set out by the Court of Appeals about twenty years ago as being a family. And I've been seeing a number of cases in recent years that say it's not fixed at five. It's really the question of whether it's a household, we think it can be less. So it's, and then you have other considerations like foster children, do they qualify as part of the family?
We'll put it on the list. I mean, I'm not sure what we...
You'll have, you'll have a discussion.
We'll have a discussion.
I have a question. How do I find out what fees developers contribute to? I know they contribute to a recreation fund. Do they contribute to any kind of capital project fund or anything like that?
None, unless they volunteer. In New York, in New York, the law is that there generally is no impact fee unless it's specifically authorized by legislation. So for example, if somebody requires sewer water, there's no specific authority to say, well, you have to pay X dollars. On the other hand, if you don't have the service available, there's no obligation that you immediately instruct a water plant to provide service to one person's home. You know, there's a, you're supposed to have a plan. You're supposed to create facilities which respond to community needs, but there's no obligation that when he knocks on the door, you provide the service.
I was actually thinking more of a capital recreation fee. You know, is the recreation fee to be used for operating or...
It's not supposed to be.
It's capital. It's a capital fund.
New improvements.
It's not talked about in that term, but that's the way it's been generally before.
We can, yeah, we have a fee schedule for, depending on the size and what you're doing in the application. We also have an escrow account that each applicant sets up based on anticipated cost of our... Consultants do the review of the project. And they have to maintain that, or else the planning board does not review the project, and they don't go on the agenda. So, and the town board comes up with the escrow account. And we're getting into it pretty good. I think we've gotten some bugs out of it from an accounting point of view and a bookkeeping point of view. It's a little bit more straightforward than what we had before. So that's underway and in the works. So in essence, in essence, the applicants pay for the services that the planning board supplies, consultants, and things like that. Okay?
What about some looming water cutoff of the village? I mean, that definitely will affect some perimeters of the town.
They probably could mess up...
Can those people be cut off first? The ones that are on the village water, that are in the town? Or is there any, they're, they're equal?
Nobody's going to be cut off.
Nobody's...
Even if we're trucking water out of the river and treating it up on the mountain, nobody's going to be cut off.
Okay.
But that's, yeah.
An exaggeration, George.
Isn't New York City planning to redo the reservoirs? Here were the aqueducts and kind of...
They have some maintenance scheduled for the end of 2016 and into 2017. Ten weeks that'll be down.
That's on the CAT scale.
What'll happen to the village water at that time?
We're looking for water to be able to have a backup system. We've got about ten days of storage right now, and then seventy.
And Dave's out with a divide, you know.
Looking for water on that one.
Okay, that's all I have. Anybody else? Milk into a urn.
We'll move.
All have a very happy Halloween. Backly nude and refreshed.
See you next year.
See you next year.